All right, let's get started. Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we have myself, of course, representing the 4th District, Councilman Cohen representing the 1st District, and Councilman Ramos representing the 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I've got Sophia G., representing the Mayor's Office, and I've got Preston representing the Office of the President. This afternoon, the committee will have a hearing on Legislative Oversight 21-0015, Baltimore City Fire Department EMS Stat and Operations for the purpose of requesting the Fire Chief to present information on the Public Safety and Government Operations to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee evaluating EMS data and operations. This bill is sponsored by myself, and looking forward to jumping into some of the data again. Chief Matts, you've been incredibly helpful in the past, and looking forward to seeing the latest on what's going on EMS. So, I'll hand off to you.
So first, good afternoon, Chairman Conway, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. For the record, my name is James Matts. I'm the Deputy Chief EMS for the Fire Department. I'm also joined by...
Ben Lawner, Medical Director, Baltimore City Fire Department. Good afternoon.
So, we have quite a few slides to go through today, and we kind of are following suit. I think, in hindsight and looking at the slide deck we're going through today, we did the quarter four from the end of '22. I think next time we come through, I'll probably do a calendar year combined...
Okay.
...to kind of give you like, hey, this is what we did last year, and here's what we're doing going forward. I think in hindsight, that might have been a little bit better to, of an option. So, I'm just going to go right into the next slide. So, the, as we've been reporting, and you would ask that we report by neighborhood for traffic accidents, as well as cardiac arrest and opiates and so forth. So, for traffic accidents, for quarter four, our highest incidents, again, was going to happen in Frankfurt. Remember, I've talked before and passed city council meetings that Frankfurt is just such a large neighborhood with so many homes that it, that makes it a lot of times show up as one of the highest incidents. We also have Coldstream Montebello at 53, as well as Pulaski Industrial Park, which is a heavy industrial area. A lot of traffic, you're going to have about 50 of those. And then Bel Air Edison at 43 to round out the top five. Cardiac arrest data is going to be our next slide for quarter four in 2022. Our highest incidents in this particular quarter was Brooklyn, which historically, I don't think Brooklyn usually shows up as a high. A lot of times, we get questions from the councils, what are we going to do with this kind of data? This kind of data is what we use to steer our outreach efforts for cardiac arrest and survival. And I know Dr. Lawner could talk for an hour about different things we could do with outreach. One of the biggest things coming down the pike, you know, COVID really slowed us down with our ability to do outreach and hands-only CPR. We have the upcoming Be More Healthy event at the Convention Center, which historically in the past, when we got out there, we were usually able to get several hundred people through with hands-only CPR at that event. The other thing is, the American Heart Association reached out with us. I think they're trying to be able to leverage the unfortunate incident that happened with the NFL with Hamlin from Buffalo. So, I think they're trying to do some outreach, as well as to spark some interest in that. So, hopefully, we can see some better numbers. I know Dr. Lawner is going to go through some performance metrics later on that, so I'll go ahead and I'll circle back around for that then. Sick cases, sick cases, you understand, is going to be one of our lowest acuity-type calls that we have. And in this particular incident, Frankfurt, again, showed up with the highest incidence in quarter four at 189, followed by Sandtown-Winchester at 132, and then downtown, remember downtown is actually a neighborhood in itself, at 127. The reason a lot of times downtown shows up is there's a surge in population during the day when people flood downtown with businesses and such. The next thing that we were going to report on for quarter four would be our trauma cases. Actually, the numbers are relatively low for the quarter, but Bel Air Edison would show as our highest incident at 15, followed by Arlington and downtown at 13 and 12 respective, Central Park Heights at 12, and then followed by Brooklyn. Opioid cases for quarter four of 2022. The downtown area showed as our highest incident at 64. Sandtown-Winchester came next at 58, Penn North at 54, followed by Upton and Carrollton Ridge at 48 and 44 respective. We do do quite a bit, I know a lot of questions come out, what kind of outreach are we doing with opioid? There's a lot of stuff that we're working on. There's a lot of different things, and I know Dr. Lawner may want to piggyback behind me a little bit on that. We're very active with our Leave Behind Narcan program, so a lot of times, if we go into a home where somebody's had an overdose, we'll leave up to three kits, if people would like us to, to leave those behind. As a paramedic and as a medical professional, it's a lot easier to treat somebody that's withdrawing from, from an opioid versus, you know, not breathing from an opioid. Some other things that we're working on with our population health initiatives is we're trying to partner with some of the peer-to-peer type things where people go out and actually outreach. Dr. Lawner, I don't know if you wanted to take just a moment to talk. We're also looking, the state of Maryland's just starting a buprenorphine, which is kind of back from the days of meth, it's a little bit the next iteration of that. And Dr. Lawner, if you want to talk about that for me?
Yeah, I'm, so I'll certainly, and thank you, Chief Matts, I will focus on the population health outcomes, but as a little bit of a preview, because the reactive response to opioid overdoses, we know, is not sufficient. And quite frankly, there is a big challenge in connecting people to on-demand resources. So, I am quite optimistic that we're going to follow suit with Frederick County. The program there is where paramedics, by virtue of their community health programs, will be able to initiate people on buprenorphine. And the reason why this is important is because leaving behind naloxone, which we quite frankly lead the region on, and leaving behind naloxone is great to mitigate an additional overdose, but it does not impact recidivism. And so, one of the things that the Fire Department, I think, needs to do is tap into some of those wraparound services. And those discussions are involving University of Maryland, Johns Hopkins, and addiction medicine specialists, and I hope to see very soon the date in which we can connect that. And ideally, we will be able to bridge that gap between the overdose that we respond to and connecting people to services. Historically, that's quite difficult.
The next two areas, the next two heat maps we'll go over, the next one is our low acuity calls, which is our lowest priority or our most frequent calls. One of our hotspots for that in quarter four would have been downtown at 430. I'm trying to find where I can read best, and it's actually behind the councilman, I can read better. Frankfurt at 394. No, you're good, you're good, Councilman. Thank you. Bel Air Edison at 241, and then Sandtown-Winchester at 231. These are the type of calls that we really need to target, is our all calls, as well as our low acuity. That's some of the stuff Dr. Lawner and I are going to piggyback on the backend of this presentation on, to talk about some of those.
Just want to acknowledge, Councilman Glover, she's joining the meeting.
And then, the last slide would be all EMS incidents, which is going to be our busiest, our highest incidence EMS calls. Frankfurt, again, comes in very high on that because of the size of the area, at 991 incidents. Downtown comes next at 930, Bel Air Edison at 689, and then Sandtown-Winchester and Upton come next at 639 and 591.
All right, before we go on, I'm going to open up the floor to questions, if folks have any questions about what's said so far. I just had a quick ones myself. Can you tell me a little bit about how we coordinate with the Health Department? We had a hearing maybe two weeks ago, talking about the Health Department and their efforts around opioids. Given the data that we have, how is that informing what the Health Department is doing? And how can that hopefully lessen the burden that you guys have to do on the emergency response?
And I'll, I'll let Dr. Lawner piggyback behind me. We've been partnering very closely with the Health Department for a number of years. I know back in, really, I want to say about 17 or 18, we started to actively share our data, because I got to be honest with you, we're the ones that are going to know where the overdoses are occurring on the streets. So, we opened up, we have some, some pretty open communication with them to let them know. We actually work with them, when they, you've seen the, the hotspots, you'll see they go out where they're having surges in opioid overdoses, particular neighborhoods. We work close with them. We've also been one of the initial partners when they started the Opioid Outreach Intervention Team. It was part of that, I think the acronym's OOC, which is the statewide. What we do is, we work in partnership to see what we can do to outreach particular neighborhoods. Some of the, the interventions that came out of that group would be the Leave Behind Narcan Group, which is a best practice they learned, like Dr. Lawner had said. We actually lead the state, we're actually a model for the rest of state of Maryland with Leave Behind. To date, I want to say we're roughly right about 2,500 doses, I'm sorry, 2,500 kits, which is about 5,000 doses of Narcan, which is huge. The actual, there's actually a backend of that, we've actually are starting to see with a lot of our reports, where people are getting a little too much Narcan when we get to, again, it's a lot easier to treat that than it is somebody that's not breathing. So, I think that's a great intervention. The Health Department's doing a bunch of different grants and such, working in conjunction with VHSB. They do a lot of peer outreach. The problem we're having with a lot of that, and that's where I think some of the, the different iterations of population health will help us, they want to try to get out to the scene where an overdose occurs. We just move too fast for them to be able to do that. Their idea is to be able to have a real street peer team, be able to go out and reach, you know, at the corner of, you know, Pennsylvania and Martin Luther King, if that's where they want to be. We have to get to the point where that, what we do now is, we actually report, where do you, where do you hang out at, what is your phone number, and we're able to flag that report, and they're actually flagged with that, but there is a little bit of a lag. They're not able to travel at the speed that we do. I mean, because quite honestly, we can go on scene for an overdose. We could be in and out of an overdose in 20 minutes. They just can't get from A to B that fast. We're working with our reporting system and their alerting matrix to be able to do that. I think one of the better future plans with population health is maybe to seat one of their peer outreach with one of our population health or mobile, you know, community paramedics to be able to outreach with some of that. One of the other things is, we're actually looking at the buprenorphine administration. And Dr. Lawner, I'll let you talk a little bit.
Honestly, I think you've covered it all with that. I think you've...
Thank you.
I think you've covered it all, Chief Matts.
Thank you.
Always very thorough, thank you. The other thought that I had, and this came up in the last hearing, I don't know if there's been any motion on this, but it was the idea of leaving Narcan behind in city buildings. Knowing that we have city buildings distributed throughout the city, Narcan, of course, being a life-saving medicine, I don't know if, it was something I think I proposed to the Health Department. I don't know if that has been pursued, or if you guys have been keyed in in any of that at all.
I mean, I think it's a great idea. I mean, there's a lot of things, I think we could take some best practices from around the state and around the area.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's one thing in terms of opioid, do we leave stop-the-bleed kits in major buildings? You know, there's, we, we have to get there. I, I think that's a great opportunity, I'm going to write a note down to take a look at that.
Sure.
But I think that needs to be expanded on. Has to, a lot of funding. I think a lot of that's doing well. One of the things, and I didn't bring it up, we're actually the first jurisdiction that applied to be, Ben, what is the title that we're, they call us now?
To dispense?
Yeah, we're actually authorized dispenser, where we can go straight to the state of Maryland for, to, in receipt of Narcan, instead of going through a Health Department, which is where we were kind of groundbreaking with that part, too. So, I'll, I'll write that down, but yes.
Yeah, that's great.
I mean, I would just add that I think the, the biggest issue that can come out of any collaboration is the harm reduction piece, which is really coordinating on the, the wraparound services. And as you know, as an acute care emergency response service, it is very difficult for the Fire Department to plug into that, and I think the, the best collaboration that can come out of that is figuring out how to prevent that in the first place. We actually are seeing a huge proliferation of naloxone, as Chief Matts mentioned. I've gone to scenes where people are giving eight, 12 milligrams, 20 milligrams was the record in the past two and a half weeks. So, I think the more work we do with the Health Department to have on-demand detox, which again, is not something that we currently offer now, would be very helpful for our paramedics. So, you have the scene of the overdose, you have somebody who's contemplative, right, and the stages of contemplative, and then they, they can be referred to a place that will actually intake them. And in a city that, I think, is really suffering from opioid overdoses, the on-demand detox is a big priority, but, so we'll work on connecting the dots, agreed with that priority?
Sure, and then tying to the question about Narcan, when we, when we offer Narcan to folks, do we track that data, track who we give it to, make sure that they know how to use it properly? Do we collect information in that way?
Correct. We actually report that. It was one of the carryovers, one of the budget hearings we did, I want to say maybe two budget hearings ago. We actually report that out on Open Baltimore on a monthly basis. We report number of Narcan admin, or I always say Narcan, it's naloxone, it's a generic, but number of Narcan administrations, as well as number of Leave Behind kits. Understanding when we put Narcan administrations, like Dr. Lawner was talking about, what'd you say the, the record was? How many milligrams?
Well, 20 in the past week.
We give two milligrams, I'm just giving you perspective. They're giving 10 times the amount that we're given. That's why I said, you can go too far the other way and make somebody withdraw a little bit from it, and that's kind of one of the drawbacks. Whenever we do leave behind, there's a maximum, we leave three kits, they're actually trained at the time. It's also self-explained on all of the kits, what we're, we're actually doing with those.
Sure.
Like I said, I went to an event out in Annapolis where they were rolling this out to the rest of the state, and they actually used us as a model for being able to get those numbers out.
I'll hone in on this specific part of my question, that is helpful. Do we have any contact information? Do we offer an opportunity to collect contact information for folks that feel the need to get Narcan? Thinking that perhaps those are going to be, be the people who are either most likely to be connected with someone who may have a dependency on drugs of some sorts, or they may, they may be the person, and if we can connect that person to services, that may be an option as well. Just a thought, I don't know if that's a good or bad idea.
One of the other things that came out of the opioid intervention team was just that, how do we have those people with the ability to reach out? With our electronic patient care reporting, we actually, what we did to accommodate that was created a question that had to be answered by every paramedic that would do a report, and it said, at this location, did this person want outreach or help? And that's where you could actually load yes, you could check it, you could put where they are, what their number is, and that's what we were using. And then what we did is, we did a in-between where they could call back to communications at our medical duty officer to flag that, to try and facilitate some of that. So, yeah, we do track that, we, it's real easy because we can track it with a report. It's a generated report that we pull. We're trying a little bit of everything to try to help with different, different angles for that.
Good. And, and we share that with the Health Department as well, or? Great. Councilwoman?
Good afternoon.
Go ahead, Councilman. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to both of you gentlemen and the whole staff that's here. About a year ago, we started a peer navigator in the library program, where folks who have struggled with substance use disorder are employed by Yenek Pratt to support other people who come in presenting issues around substance use disorder. They also connect people with housing, if that's the need, any kind of healthcare. They do provide Narcan, we've had a few trainings. We started at Penn North. I mention this because Sandtown was high on the list, and from having taught there, I know it is high on the list of places where we see overdose. But as it relates to wraparound services, that is really what they are there to do. It has been remarkably successful, so much so that we got a grant recently from Care First to expand it to eight other branches. And then, we are going to be pushing in this year's budget to expand it citywide. There's also interest from our governor, he's coming to check it out soon. I say all this to say, it would be very advantageous for you all to connect with those folks. It can be a home base. We know that people that use drugs frequent our libraries a lot. And historically, what Yenek Pratt had done is, they had a zero tolerance policy dating back to the O'Malley era, where anyone who they thought was either high or drunk, they would just kick them out and put them back on the street and write them up. After going through trauma-informed care training, Director Heidi Daniel got rid of that policy, scrapped it off their books, and brought in peer navigators. Donna Bruce, who was the first one over at Penn North, has been incredibly effective. I've literally watched videos where she's administered Narcan and saved someone's life right there in the library. We're going to be there tomorrow at, I don't know if you're coming, but hope so. Our, our Trauma-Informed Care Task Force is going to be there tomorrow at 5:30 in the Penn North Library Branch, would invite you both to join. They're going to present on what they're doing. We're going to hear from Director Daniel, Donna, Tiffany Scott, who runs the Maryland Peer Advisory Council. But it is exactly the type of wraparound services and partnership that I absolutely think EMS needs to be plugged into, both because you could assist them, and I think they could assist you all. So, we'd invite you to join at 5:30 tomorrow, and if there isn't already a connection, if you could email me after this meeting, and I will make one, because making sure all the synapses are connecting and knowing what we're all doing is obviously very important as it relates to saving lives.
Thank you, Councilman, we definitely will. Thank you.
Great. Go ahead.
Chief Matts, thanks again for coming for us. I'll have to look at some of the other presentations, but I don't remember Coldstream-Homeside-Montebello being so high on all of these metrics that you just put in place for the last quarter, particularly traffic incidents. I think for, for sick, I think we said, I mean, I, I can guess what's going on there. But, you know, traffic accidents, I'm concerned, like, do you have any data as to, like, where that's actually happening?
No, I, I...
Use the mic.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry. I was asking about the, the stats that we were just looking at for quarter four, and Coldstream-Homeside-Montebello is in my district, so I just wanted, I was curious about, you know, the, the traffic incidents. That seems disturbing, and we should know exactly where that's happening, to see if there's a traffic calming thing that we should be doing, or if there's a, something else happening. With the opening of the Harvard Road Bridge, I think it's kind of made the traffic over there a little wonky, so I just, I'm curious if there's a way that you could get me that information.
I absolutely will. I don't have it in front of me, but I'll, I'll go ahead and get right, right back to you and let you know on that. My guess is somewhere through that corridor would be my guess is where that is.
I would have guessed, too, but I just want to make sure that I understand what's going on there. And then, the, there's the sick cases. Can you tell us the difference between sick cases and the low acuity, just for definition purposes?
Sick cases essentially for, for purposes of, and I'll defer to Dr. Lawner when the time comes, but sick cases for, for EMD purposes are called a 26-card. That's just one particular kind of a, a call that we would go on. Low acuity is a whole bunch of different types of...
Right.
...low priority, low acuity call. 26-card is our largest number of calls that we do per year for everything, which is just, it's, it's like a catch-all, I hate to tell you.
Mm-hmm.
Ben, would you add anything else to that?
No, I would just say, this is the ever, I'm smiling because this is the challenge that we have, you know, one of the other metrics is how fast...
We probably would have asked it in another, we probably asked it in another hearing, and we get, you know, so, excuse me.
No, no, I, I'm agreeing, I'm absolutely agreeing, because the challenge is, one of the metrics is how fast do you process? So, if dispatchers have, let's say, 60 seconds to process a call, it's very difficult sometimes for people without any type of healthcare literacy or awareness to say what's going on. So, when a patient does not have a breathing problem, a stroke, the dispatchers and call-takers will classify it as a general card. So, this is the most common card, which essentially means that it's not one of the life-threatening emergencies, and it's a big miscellaneous quote-unquote "bag," if you will. And when you talk about lower and higher acuity, and this is, again, not the Fire Department's desire to complicate this, but we assign levels of priority, and I'd be happy to publish a EMD Emergency Medical Dispatch Guide, but the lower-acuity calls refer to the alpha and Bravo responses, which are without priority symptoms. So, if somebody calls 911 and says, I have a stubbed toe, they have no bleeding, chest pain, shortness of breath, loss of consciousness, that's a sick card, alpha or Bravo determinant, and then that's what we use to, as a surrogate marker of low acuity.
Right, because we had talked before that, you know, because of the questions that are answer, are asked during the, you know, it, it helps to, to rank your response, obviously, in terms of triaging. And then, sometimes when people say, you know, the dispatcher says, do you have chest pain? Yes, immediate, but Willie, what, what was that chest pain, right? So, I think that's one of the things that you're going to be talking about later, in terms of how you're going to be addressing that, because I think that we were trying to...
Hope so, yes.
...address, address that issue. Okay. I do want to say, there was an incident in Charles Village last, a couple weeks ago that I was involved in, and the 911 dispatcher was really great. She basically said, okay, Councilwoman, calm down. Tell me what's going on. So, I, I'm grateful for, you know, obviously, highly-trained, you know, folks to know when somebody's totally panicking, to be able to, you know, just relax, tell people to, in a nice, calm way, okay, we want to help you, you just got to relax. So, I appreciated that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And last sort of point, and I'm, I'm sure we do this to some degree, but in looking at these maps, they're actually really helpful, because in my mind, I sort of see each of these maps and the cases that, you know, sort of underlie them, traffic incidents, cardiac arrests, they each are caused by a problem. I would imagine for traffic incidents that there's some sort of traffic engineering that would need to be considered to reduce traffic in Frankfurt, for instance. If we can, with the proper intervention, we could conceivably reduce the amount of traffic, traffic incidents happening in Frankfurt, relieve some of the pressure from, on the EMS folks, and save some time in the future. But, you know, it would be great, for instance, and you guys don't have this data, but from a citywide perspective, thinking about within this department or within other departments, what solutions we may have in other departments to resolve these issues, and where those investments are being made and put on a map just like this, and see if those things line up when all's said and done. So, for instance, we're thinking about traffic studies and interventions for the Department of Transportation, I'd love to see a map like this and see whether or not it actually lines up, and we're working in the same neighborhoods, because ultimately, I think, we see, we would hopefully see efficiencies on, you know, for both DOT and for EMS. And that, the same thing goes down the line. I don't, I don't, I don't have as clear a case as traffic incidents, but cardiac arrests and otherwise, where we're spending a lot of our time is something to think about. So, food for thought, you know, I think it's something, maybe not that we can address here in this, in this hearing, because we just have you guys here, but certainly for discussion with...
DOT about that.
DOT and the administration, you know, for the various other agencies that play party in resolving these issues, we should definitely have those conversations and think about it that way.
Sure, so, just to kind of dovetail on what you're saying, the data should inform what we're doing. That's essentially what we're doing.
Absolutely.
That's what we're doing with the opiates, that's what we're doing with the cardiac arrest, and we just have to steer our direction of what we're doing.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm hoping that, you know, one of the challenges is, there's a lot of information, and, and as, as we've seen, we can, there's an opportunity to go very deep into the weeds and all these things. I just want to echo that based upon this feedback and based upon our need to understand and intervene, we have been working with the Mayor's Office of OPI in a dashboard. So, ideally, whenever we get into these forums, we're all looking at the same information. So, I could not agree with you more, and I appreciate you pointing that out. The dashboard is in its final stages of iteration, but hopefully, anyone with access, such as the City Council stakeholders can look at this and say, I want to look at the, you know, you look at the same timeframe or whatever's relevant to you. So, we'll be looking at the same thing with respect to some of these incidents. So, a lot of those metrics are already there, and we hope to have a very sort of streamlined and consistent presentation as it continues to mature.
Awesome, thank you. You can continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, what we're going to go through now is a call volume. We're doing average calls for serviced by day, week, and month, as well as peak times. Our daily calls during the quarter four, you got to remember, this is quarter four, there's 432 incidents daily, which is down slightly, which is, by the way, very appropriate for the end of the year, when things start getting cold, it starts to slow down a little bit. Weekly, we're down to 2841, which for quarter three was at 3,081. And then, on the month, we're down roughly, roughly about 1,000 calls down, which is completely appropriate. Peak call, time of the day, and I'll have a heat map, I think, on the next slide or two, but roughly from 12 o'clock in the afternoon until about 6 o'clock at night is our busiest time in this particular quarter. Mondays are still one of our busiest day, and surprisingly, Mondays are extremely busy on the hospital side, too. Ben, aren't they one of the worst days at the hospital?
24/7, every day.
Yeah. Time of the month that's the busiest is the end of the month, and in this particular quarter, October was the busiest for our call volume. In addition, we were looking at, looks like the same disregard that slide. They just broke that slide down more, is all they did. I'm sorry, I was just trying to figure out why it was the same slide twice. What we have next is our heat map that breaks down essentially, when are we the busiest. Quite honestly, years ago, when we started our peak units, we did our peak times. Our peak times were from 9 o'clock in the morning till 9 o'clock at night. Our latest data really shows that our peak times run roughly from 7 o'clock at night until roughly midnight. There's very little time when it slows down. It really drops off once you hit, like, midnight, but when you hit, like, that 5, 6 o'clock in the morning, once it goes in that next hour, it jumps significantly per call per One of the next things they had asked us to report on is our top five of our most frequent ALS calls, which are advanced calls, where you'd have paramedic-level things, and then we're going to follow that with our BLS, or our basic life support calls. It's not surprising that most of our stuff is centered around overdoses, shortness of breath, and chest pain. In this case, difficulty speaking or breathing is going to be the highest incident, which is 2120, which in quarter three was lower at 1773. The next would be our overdose. In this particular quarter, we had 929. There was over 1,000 in quarter three, so there was a drop there. Chest pain would be our next call, with 581 incidents in this quarter. Before that, it was slightly down at 552. Overdoses with changing of color, which are all essentially overdose-type calls. There was 538 incidents here. The quarter before that, there was 690. That kind of goes back to what Dr. Lawner was saying, it's how, it's actually coded by the call takers. They're slightly different, but it's still an overdose at the end of the day. This is another, last one is going to be our breathing problems or shortness of breath. There's 520 incidents, and the quarter before that was 493. The top five of our basic life support are all going to be centered around this 26 card for the most part, which is that sick call, councilwoman, is going to be our sick call. First one is going to be your sick-not-well, at 1,368 incidents. The month before that, it was pretty relative at 1,373. Behind that, we had the sick with abnormal breathing at 1,377 calls. A month before that, we had 1,100 roughly. Behind that was vehicle accident. Remember, vehicle accidents are pretty prevalent, it's one of our higher number calls that we do per day. There was 10,050 in this quarter. Before that, it was 10,099, which is pretty relative. Sick-not-alert, which is kind of a catch-all, and in this particular incident, we had 913 incidents. The quarter before that, there was 505. And then lastly, just general sick card in general was 823. Quarter before that, there was 788. EMS response time would be our next response for quarter four. The transport median response is going to be at nine minute and one. NFPA, which is a standard that we use for reporting, and you'll see that in our budget book things, they use nine month, nine minutes as the gold standard. It actually is eight minutes response, and then a minute to get out the door. That's where the nine comes from. In this incident, we're at 901. Medic median time was at 854. Medic, remember, is your advanced life support units. And then the basic life supporter, the AMBO median time in this case, would be 926. Later, Dr. Lawner and I will talk about some of the how-to-report, potato, patata, tomato, tomato. Unfortunately, I don't use median a lot from an operational perspective. For me, especially with offload, I'm more interested in 90th percentile. I want to know when 90% of the units are going to actually come out of the hospital, so that's why I tend to steer towards that particular metric when we look at reporting. And this is the next part, fire suppression response time to EMS calls. The median response time for suppression to EMS calls is five minutes and 52 seconds. You've got to remember, that's a basic life support provider arriving on location, provide that initial level of care. And then the median wait time for them to wait for EMS arrival is about an additional eight minutes. It has to do with us getting those units on the street or out of the hospital.
Chief Mash, just a quick clarified question. For the 90th percentile on the EMS response times, so it takes us 18 minutes, 90 percent-
Eighteen is 90%, that means 90% of our response. You've got to remember, there's outliers in there. We can have, some of those units can be waiting because of ties at the hospital. It's like our offload times. The ideal time, a lot of times that we-
That's the at-hospital time?
I'm just, at-hospital time, a lot of times will delay a lot of that.
Got it.
With us getting out for some of those calls would be a lot of-
So just to go back to that slide, if you go back maybe-
Which one? Do you want the EMS call?
One more?
Mm-hmm.
So for this one, the transport unit median time is nine minute, one second, and then the 90th percentile, this is 1806, what is the 90th?
Ninetyth percentile, that is going to be the total time, which is going to involve all of our offload and problems we're having at the hospital, with the offload time. That's why it's so imperative that we get units on the street. It's a combination of lack of units, lack of units that are tied up at the hospitals, calls on other calls, but unfortunately, 90th percentile in this case doesn't look that good.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. You're saying our average time is nine minute, one second?
Mm-hmm.
Our 90%, of our units are getting there within 18 minutes, six seconds?
In worst-case scenario, is what you're looking at with 90th percentile. Operationally, I have to look at that. Like, if I have a unit that goes to next hospital, you can give me a median call and tell me they're getting out of there in five minutes, but in reality, in the worst-case scenario, some of these hospitals are taking 73 minutes at 90th percentile to get units out of the hospital. That's killing us with 28 units that are on the street.
So you're saying our difficulty with responding is tied to the at-hospital time, not that they're spending 18 minutes at the hospital?
Part of that problem is that. There's multiple areas that are problems in there, but yeah, alliance share that will be offload in our ability to get out of the hospital. Ben, do you want to add something?
So when we presented to the, and there is nothing to hide in the data, I would agree that that is an excessive time, but I would say a couple of things. Number one, the problem is multifactorial. This jurisdiction operates 28 ambulances. When you look at Washington DC that has less call volume, you're talking about 30 basic life support ambulances and another fleet of in excess of 30. We did a study that compared call volumes in terms of Philadelphia, and it's very clear that relatively, part of the problem is the number of ambulances on the road. That is just a very clear incident, right? If you have 28 full-time ambulances, and they have to go to the hospital, which is always going to take about 30 minutes to get out, that's one problem. The other challenge, as you mentioned, too, is, you know, the hospital wait time, which that is, again, sometimes outside of the fire department's control. And remember, the other thing is also, the response time statistics differ, so this is why, and we will report out what's asked, but I think it's extremely important to look at response times to time-sensitive emergencies, because what is going to happen, and what has happened throughout the country, is if we keep saying that we are going to respond to everything within nine minutes, we are going to respond ourselves out of any type of acceptable window, which has happened in Detroit, New Orleans, the history goes on and on. So when you look very closely at the NFPA standard, it does not say every single call, and some of them, it talks about ALS. So I just want to be very clear that, when we talk about response time, you're looking at the response times to everything. And I think, for example, if we were going to set a standard that says, "We should have an ambulance there in eight minutes if you have a headache without any priority symptoms," that would be very unreasonable. So a lot of the things that we need to do, and this will be on the dashboard, is we'll report time-sensitive calls, and we also will talk about how we can respond more smartly, so that we don't continue to send resources to every emergency, because as we all know, regardless of how we feel and what we report, a baseline of 28 ambulances may not be able to get everywhere within a timely manner. So lots of context.
That's very helpful to understand. And we do have the ability to capture data between ALS and BLS.
Yes, sir.
So I would love to have the difference between the two of those. I certainly agree, if someone's heart stops, we want to get there as soon as possible.
Sure.
But if someone stubbed their toe and calls an ambulance, they can, they can wait more than eight minutes.
That's on the dashboard, too. We have the time-sensitive calls, and we have that data as well. That's available for view.
The thing, just to, behind what Dr. Lawner was saying, remember, we're trying to get to the point where some of these performance metrics are going to be outdated. In a real good system, we want to leave people wait if it's appropriate for them to wait for us to get there. Like Ben was talking about, we want to get to this high-acuity calls, the high priority, the people that aren't breathing, or the people that have trauma, or something like that. If you're, you have, you know, you're young, and you have a stubbed toe, or you have a bad back or something, you need to wait. And that's where we have to get this paradigm, this change. And some of those numbers aren't going to look good when you look at that, because people are going to sit. And this kind of, the next slide is kind of feeds into that, where we're at as a system right now, which is unit-hour utilization, and I know we talked about that quite a bit. But unit-hour utilization is where they actually report per hour, is how busy our system is. In a really good system, I'd be God around the country if I had a UHU of .25 or .3, or that would mean that the units are working 25% or 30% of every hour. That means for a third of an hour, you're working, the other two, the other two-thirds, you should be going to the bathroom, training, restocking a unit, getting the unit ready, working out, weightlifting, something like, eating a meal. In reality, our average number here is, we're at 64, or 64% of every hour, we're running these units. You know, that came really evident when we transitioned over from pen and paper to computer-based electronic patient care reporting. We used military-grade computers, well, we destroyed military-grade computers. They said, "I don't understand how you could." We use these in the military. They're not designed to work 24 hours a day. You know, I could tell you that one of the worst units that we had had at one point, and it's not current, we actually had a UHU of .92 of one of our units at one point, which is 92% of an hour. A computer will never get a break if you never do that. So that's why we're trying to break that down.
So, and I'll give you a moment, just, I want to go back to, just a request for, the next time we go through this in the next quarter-
Sure.
-to just very specifically break out the difference between our ALS response times and BLS response times. And I don't know if we're able to do this, but, and I think this is something outlined maybe later on in the presentation, about how we respond. Like, not having our highest, most valuable ambulance respond is, I think, an important opportunity, where to sort of-
Be an appropriate response. You're trying to say, when do we send a BLS, when do we send an ALS?
Sure, yeah, yeah, yep. And so I think, you know, one, breaking out those response times, I'm certainly more comfortable, even if it's 20 minutes, because someone's got a headache, you know. I'm fine with that, but if someone gets shot, we want to be there within nine minutes, sooner if we possibly can. And so if we can break out that data, that'd be helpful. And then also, understanding our response to ALS versus BLS types of incidents, like, what shows up?
So we can answer that question now. The challenge is, and this is, again, I would respectfully offer, it's a subject of a different conversation, so right now, if you don't have the ability to triage, what happens is, when you call 911, it's all treated as an emergency. So that means there are, we do have determinants, and we are in the process of dispatcher form, but that has to be, you have to have the ability to triage the calls, either retrospectively or prospectively. So if you call 911 right now in Baltimore City, everything is emergent. We do break it down into BLS and ALS. The challenge is, and this is why I just want to be very direct in terms of what happens when we report this data, is if you have no units available, everything becomes an emergency. So we do not have right now a protocol of a non-emergent response in an effort to get to the scene. So if you call 911, we are sending emergent issues, and this is a very important discussion, because that's why the fire apparatus can never be rehabilitated appropriately, because they're being run to the ground, right? So if they're the first responders, and we don't have the ability to say, "Okay, stand by," the apparatus are in a continual state of emergency response. So what I would respectfully submit is that, once we have the ability to triage appropriately, once we have the ability to classify calls in a more knowledgeable and informed and consistent manner, then you can say, "What is our BLS and ALS response?" But just to be very frank, is, if the calls are holding at any given point of time, and you do not have somebody in dispatch saying, "This is or is not emergent," we rely on emergency medical dispatch, which is the industry standard. So all of the calls are going out in an effort to get somebody to the scene of the emergency, which is not, I think, necessarily a best practice. It's the reality of a system that is under a significant amount of stress.
And we are working on that?
Yes, we have this, the latter of the slides, they had asked for the DC right now. We're working on some dispatcher form, we onboarded a medical director, and that's in the, this particular-
More to come, more to come.
Yeah, I'll let you guys get into that when we get later on.
Okay, that's actually some of the things we're going to talk about today, was some of the things we're doing, what are some, what are we going to do to change some of this as best we can? And that's exactly where we were heading next. Did you have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to just add one point. I live a block from Engine 31, Ambulance 3. They're always going. I can hear them all the time. Oh, I mean, and I'm tuned to it now more, obviously, but I hear them all the time, and I know which one is which now. So, you know, our, that particular one, I think it's the fifth busiest, or the fourth busiest in the entire city. And so I get the need, they're constantly out, and talking to Captain Parker, they're always out. Though the only worry, and we'll probably get into this now, is, you know, everything is an emergency to everybody, which is important. So I don't want to get to a point where we're, like, triaging unnecessarily if somebody's actually got an emergency, right? So I think that's going to have to come with training and all of that, but I just, I don't, you know, I hesitate if there's a, an emergency that we don't get, end up getting to.
Strict protocols is what you're trying to do. That's what we're trying to do, and you've got to understand, and Dr. Lawner's going to report out later on behavioral, our behavioral dashboard stuff. When we started the behavioral dashboard, you remember, you've got to take baby steps when you do these things. You can make catastrophic mistakes if you don't.
Yeah, you're collecting data first, and then trying to decide what to do, but it's, you know, again, I just want, I don't want us to get into a triage protocol when, you know, somebody, again, like you said earlier, people who are calling don't always know what to say, the key words, all of that, to be able to help. So it's going to take, I think, a lot to try to figure this out, which I'm guessing you're working on.
I would say we don't have to, again, and I use this phrase in the city, in the city administration, city stat, is we don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are standards of care that we apply to 911. So when we talk about rigid protocols, everything goes through the Emergency Medical Dispatch Protocol first. We are not adding any additional steps, we are not reinventing any additional process. The EMD algorithm has been in place, and it's the standard of the emergency service industry for the past 40 years. So it's high priority symptoms, high priority calls, and things that are not known, in other words, if you can't determine, it's automatically given a higher priority. So I just want to emphasize that that concern is embedded on the approach we're taking. None of this is a reactive effort to say, you know, "We're going to leave somebody." This is not about 911 diversion, it's about 911 smart utilization. Because, as you mentioned, we just have to get to a system that, instead of responding reflexively to everything, like, it is an emergency, where we report out median response times of 18, 19 minutes, and we keep saying we have no apparatus to put on the road, to a system that says, "Is it an emergency? Send everything." And if it's not an emergency, which EMD reliably and historically defines quite well, we send the correct thing. And we'll report out that data when we get into the DC Right Care Right Now program.
Please continue.
Thank you.
Councilman Cohen?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. In a similar vein, one of the issues the councilman and I have been paying really close attention to is Baltimore Crisis Response, BCRI. And so I wonder how we're integrating your system with theirs, knowing that their BHSP is looking at this larger regional play, and I know you mentioned behavioral health's coming soon, but just thinking about the triage, thinking about how we deploy, right? I mean, it should be one integrated system with an appropriate and effective response. So I am curious what the conversation is with you all, with BCRI, and just sort of who's coordinating that, like, what the touch point is? Because ultimately, our concern is, we don't want communities or constituents to be confused and to call a number, and then either nothing happens, or the wrong, the wrong treatment is provided, right? Someone wants a behavioral health response, and they get a police response. So curious about that piece of the puzzle as well.
We can talk about that in the, that's another one. Stay tuned, we have the behavioral health slides coming up, which will directly address that.
And to be fair, from the beginning and the inception of that, I'll just go, before we get there, they have a very, very tight quality assurance that they, in the beginning, they were doing it multiple times per week, then it went to once a week, and they evaluate every call, looking for any hiccups. Because you've got to understand, everything that we've ever tried to do, and at least I have, there's always mistakes when we go first round, first iteration, there's always mistakes. You've got to figure out what you didn't know, you've got to adjust to it, and Dr. Lawner's going to talk about that. He does a very good job with that on a regular basis, so.
Please continue.
Sure. So we're going to talk briefly, as quickly as I can for you, about EMS population health programs. It's called mobile integrated healthcare, it's called community paramedicine, it's got different words. But basically, these are programs that are put in place that address the fact of our constituents, you know, positive impact on their social determinants of health. We want to reduce our call volume, we want to have overall better patient outcomes, and then improve response times. What does that mean? That means you take the right response with the right resource to the right patient. Those patients don't need to go to the emergency department all the time, they can go to another. Might be the destabilization center for something else. And that's what we're trying to target with a lot of these programs. One of the biggest, some of the mitigation strategies that we're going to talk about today are going to be the ED offload delay.[1698.75]
I know that came up in the Facets Report, one of the things that you saw in the Facets Report. They said if we could have our offload to be equivalent to six additional units on the street. That's really hard, because we're working with other outside entities, and we're trying to work as a team to get that done. We're going to talk about the DC Right Care Right Now program. DC actually was kind enough to share their performance data with us, so we're going to try to blow through some of that as well. And then we're going to talk about some other ED diversion programs that are currently out there. Offload delay updates, go ahead, I'll let you talk, Doc.
Dr. Lawner wants to use a clicker, I'm sorry.
Well, it's, all right, anyway, we've given this presentation, I know, a couple of times. So these are all clinical metrics. In terms of the offload delay, we have been working with MIMS, we have been working with the MDH, we have been working with regulatory bodies in order to standardize an offload procedure. That grew out directly from the group of eight. So those conversations continue, and what I expect to come out of that is a, I would argue, a coherent document that says, all the fire department and EMS jurisdictions are going to accept this. So I think we've done a very good job at raising the expectations of when we ask EMS to offload, and we have had some several internal policies which will hopefully move the needle. So we've been coordinating, as I mentioned, with other jurisdictions. So that's a good update on that front, and those meetings also continue. And then of course, we have the, which will likely be quarterly collaboration meetings with the hospitals and the mayor's office of OPI, which is also tracked on the dashboard. There we go. So I will, okay, so the next thing is, any other updates on the offload delay, Chief Matts? Okay, so I will give a brief overview of this program, and we've talked about this several times. I want to reiterate that this is not the best program, but when you talk about, what is 911 doing in order to mitigate call volumes? This is a proven, successful, and data-driven approach, which matches the appropriate resource to the appropriate time. So I know these medical directors very well, they recently published a paper on their successes. There are jurisdictions throughout the country, in Texas, North Carolina, Washington DC, others that have done this multiple times. So, the DC Right Now program does the intake of low acuity calls. And what happens is, to your point, is that all calls go through 911, so there's no confusion. In 911, there's a third party, there's a connection to a third party which has their own medical director and a nurse. And if the call meets certain determinants which are lower acuity, so there's no priority symptoms, they can identify the caller, it goes to the, it goes to this particular program. And then what happens is, the nurse can either connect somebody to one of several resources. So, and this is where you can see this vision starting to get together. So whether it's wraparound behavioral health services, whether it is an Uber, whether it is 911, notice the pathway is that we're most familiar with and safe, that's the first one where they call an ambulance. Another pathway would be, you don't need an ambulance, and we connect you to your doctor's office. And you can see, depending upon the resources available in the community, you can tailor it in order to get the patient to the most appropriate destination. This program is not only safe, it does cost a little bit in terms of investment, but we will also go over some of the outcomes, which are here. So if you look at what DC is doing, on the right of that slide are about, I don't know, 25 federally qualified healthcare centers. Those centers participate and have to receive patients during operating hours. And what happens is, if the calls are eligible, they go to the nurse triage line. The nurse will connect them with a rideshare, i.e. Uber, Lyft, whatever your pleasure, Chief Matts's service. And they will go to, non-emergently, these clinics. And when this is fully appropriate, and when this is fully actualized, the program has diverted in their first year alone 7,000 calls, which is essentially equal to more than one ambulance. So it works well in terms of what it is designed to do, and then they, of course, have their own dashboard in terms of calls that are going back to 911. So if, for example, the patient gets sicker, or if the patient says, you know, I really feel this way and that, there's a full transparent reporting of what happens. The pie graph on that other side states that it's not only the clinics, it's the fact that sometimes it's self-care. Some people just need a prescription. And I want to also emphasize that the other thing that we were doing here is telehealth. So there is a large firm that we are now in contract negotiations with, and of course, it moves, I would say, I don't want to use the word slow, I would say a deliberate pace. And Tele911 is in place in Los Angeles, Texas, Florida, and that is another option, where you connect people to a physician. And that physician can actually write a prescription and solve a great deal of these things. So I'm making the point that with medically informed dispatch, you can not only triage correctly, but get the patient the appropriate resources. What that graph shows is that a program that is successful, you can divert away from 911 at the height of its utilization, approximately 15% of overall call volume. And that is done, yes, sir.
Just kind of looking at this, with the reference to self-care. I was looking earlier, actually, at the flow chart for 911 operators to nurse, first responders, or life emergency, transport. All these end with us taking them somewhere. But there is self-care kind of listed here, does self-care happen after we transport them, or?
No, not at all, excellent question. Self-care includes, sometimes people can be made an appointment, sometimes you can treat the patient in place, so there are a variety of options. Self-care is the classification that applies to everyone that was not transported. And that number actually grows when you look at telehealth outcomes. That particular company will state that of the ones that are referred to them, they, and I think this is a little bit robust, but they argue that 75 to 80% of patients can be successfully treated in place. We'll see how that works in Baltimore City, but there is an option to treat people in place where they would not have to be transported.
Yeah, it makes me sort of wonder, when looking back to a couple of slides ago about the low acuity calls, how many of those can be addressed with self-care, or some other scenario in which we don't have to transport them to a hospital or a clinic?
So that's one of the things that we're actively looking at here. I know I've said it before, there's no magic bullet. Hospital offload is one piece of the pie, nurse triage is another piece. Tele911, telemedicine is another. We can go up to somebody's house, you know, look, Mr. Conway, you look a little, you're sick but not quite sick. How about I put a doctor online, and we get, talk to you? There's programs out there where they can actually send medications through to like Walgreens, Rite Aid, CVS for you. That's some of the stuff that we're exploring. One of the other things that we just did, I don't know if it's in your slides or not, you're going to see about 71% on this particular slide of our callers are Medicaid. We're in active negotiations with Maryland Medicaid right now to talk about getting payment through Medicaid for rideshare programs like Uber and Lyft. You know, it's a lot easier for them to pay 25 or 30 bucks instead of 150 they're paying to us. When you look at the fact we do between 38 and 42,000 Medicaid transports a year, that's a huge number. So that's where we're trying to get down. We're working, Maryland's slow, we're trying to work our way through the system with them with different programs like this, alternative destination and things like that.
So I hope you're hearing that the way forward is one that is methodical and data-driven, because, you know, the system is in such a state of stress that there is also this desire to do something. But I think when you're dealing with issues of this level of complexity, we want to do things that are proven, and that have protocols that we can track and evaluate and measure. I can assure you that I am just very uncomfortable as a physician that is by default tasked with medical oversight of 1,800 providers and 27 ambulances. It gives me great pause to think that we cannot either meet the needs of people in distress, or that patients will have to wait. So this is an opportunity to, I think, leverage resources in a little bit more of an evidence-based way. Just to save some time, this slide just talks about how the savings are more than paid for if you extrapolate the charges in terms of what Medicaid would pay for an emergency department visit. So the lessons learned, and this is, I think, very important, so DC has similar demographics. This did not change long-term behavior. So if you basically had a nurse triage line on, it did not stop people from calling 911. And that is my biggest echo, is everybody says, you know, well, we'll stop calling, or let's reduce call volume, or let's educate the public. But the reality is, is at 2:00 in the morning, when you have an emergency, you may not want to wait until 7:00 AM when your doctor's office gets on the phone and says, please call the ER. So we are not, now, we are not funded necessarily in the first iteration to go 24 hours. We will have to look at this, but I would suggest to you that this makes 911 a little bit more responsive, so that when you call, you can divert them to the appropriate resource. I think the barriers are what we talked about, and these are things that it's interesting to see these coming up in different settings. Number one, the dispatch situation, we have a 911 office, we have a dispatch office, and then it gets to response. I think when you talk about things like behavioral health, which we will certainly get into, it's important to have everybody in the same place, and that requires a lot of oversight and combination. So I think that's an internal challenge that the fire department will have to deal with. And then the linkage to transport resources. I think if we do not figure out how to transport people by means other than an ambulance, these programs will fail, and I know we're in active negotiations with Maryland Medicaid on that. I have urged Maryland Medicaid to move expeditiously. I told them the medical director said so.
Councilman, these are your slides coming up right now.
So I want to just talk about this a little bit, because this is where we have, again, these are all publicly reportable metrics. This is the mayor's forward-facing dashboard, which not surprisingly shows that the longer this is in place, the more calls you will certainly divert. We have QA calls, I think, every two weeks, one's coming up tomorrow, where we talk about the challenge. So here is, and I'm hoping to address your concerns in this. So first of all, people call 911, and the idea is, BHSP just got funding for a behavioral health clinician, and we are trialing that, that person is going to be in the call center. So it will not interrupt the process, but if something meets diversion, or the call is suitable, it will go to 988, and that will follow the process of mobile crisis team and connection with BCRI. And again, this is not something where, I, as an emergency physician and EMS physician, I did not grow up in my residency with examples of how to do this successfully, so we have to look at places that do this well. And if you look at the Houston Call Center, just to be very clear, there are 14 behavioral specialists in that call center. So calls, they call, which is excellent. We do not have, but that's the gap, right? So in order for us to be there, we have to onboard this one, and if there's a proof of concept, they'll get more funding, because that's how you move the lines together. Because what happens now is, people call 911 and say, I have a behavioral health crisis, and then it's, I'm also withdrawing from alcohol, I'm shaking, I'm hallucinating, I'm altered. And then it goes completely away from diversion. And what we cannot do is, if there's nobody tasked with talking to that patient, and they have 60 seconds to figure out what's wrong, we don't want to miss the boat. And so by default, there's an upward triage. And that's something in 911 where we really have to narrow that gap and move that delta down. It is hoped that with the behavioral health clinician, the continued QA calls, that's, I think, a symbol of success for the city, that we've been able to do this in this particular environment, and that will continue. So those calls happen every two weeks, you are certainly welcome to join and sit in. I guess we'd probably have to sign a confidentiality document. But we're proud of that process, and we ask a very, we ask a lot of those similar questions. I think our total now is, so that's behavioral health diversion. I'll certainly pause if there are any questions or additions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for that. So just kind of thinking ahead of the curve a little bit, knowing that G-Brix is supposed to come online sometime, I'm not really sure when, but in the next few years, where it'll be hopefully a more integrated, connected, regional call system. What's the conversation with BHSP and with the hospitals on that? Just sort of thinking about, and obviously really glad there is now a clinician on staff, that is great progress, and certainly something that we, this council, fought really hard for in the last budget season, was to enhance BCRI's budget, knowing that they were underfunded and not getting much, if any, city funding. So that's good to hear. But just thinking ahead, knowing that we are sort of starting to think more regionally, Baltimore City, County, and so on, what is that coordination looking like? Like, are you all in those conversations around G-Brix? And, you know, again, the ideal here, whether it's 988, whether it's 911, whatever it is, that there is an integrated system that is user-friendly, that, you know, folks know the number to call, and that it can get to where you need to go, and get the appropriate treatment for the response. So curious, kind of looking ahead, where we're at?
This is a great question, and a lot of this, to your point, is in the future state. I can tell you that the fire department has representation on the G-Brix council, and there are other meetings between the stakeholders and 911 about how to integrate that. So there are subcommittees within that particular environment that talk about how to inform this discussion. I will say that getting the word out has been one big challenge. The move to 988, for example, is something that not everybody understands. The coordination of 988 is proceeding very well, because it's the BHSP that has BCRI taking the call. So the same people are involved in the conversation. So I look forward to that collaboration, these are things that are continually mapped out, because if you look at, I think, the time in which we've implemented this, it's only been going on for about a year and a half, give or say, or give or take, rather. So the only thing I can report out at this time in terms of that conversation is the ongoing collaborative discussion with G-Brix, the subcommittees, and the fact that they, we are working actively to integrate them more into 911. So the conversations are ongoing, and we probably need to have more of them to figure out protocols.
And you all are in, you all are in good conversation with like Ally Smith and the folks from the mayor's office and the city administrator, okay?
Yeah, she's very well represented, which is great, and it's been a good conversation, so yes.
Good, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you, please continue.
Yeah.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just going, well, on the behavioral health piece, I really do appreciate where we're going here. The emphasis has really been on suicidal ideation, and obviously, there's more than that. So hopefully, the thought is to expand beyond just suicidal ideation. I know it was started that way as a pilot, so, and I think, but 988 is still concentrating mostly on suicidal ideation, and not the other crises that we have. So you're, those conversations are expanding that, right?
It is, that's the baby steps I was talking about earlier. We got to make baby steps and make sure we're making really informed decisions on what types of calls that we're diverting and not diverting, which is the, well, now it's up to biweekly calls, down to biweekly calls that they're doing to check. They're doing a much better job in the beginning, Ben, how often, you mean, was it twice a week? No, no, in the beginning.
Oh, we met every day for a while.
They met every day when they first rolled this out. And then it slowed down to, okay, it was a couple of times a week, then it was once a week. Now they're down to every other week, which tells you, they're starting to get it right. They're going to start to add periodically different call determinants, making sure, making informed decisions, whether they've done the right decision or the wrong decision with those, and that kind of steers where they go. So I think they're on the right track, Councilman.
So, and just to be clear, and this is the other issue. So we do not have, again, an EMS system that is physician-driven, meaning that there's not, the clinicians in this dispatch are not asking, we're not trying to get the diagnosis correct. And I want to, I so appreciate this conversation, but I want to temper the expectations by saying, if the call goes to 911, there's a limited number of determinants that are eligible. So in order for the call taker, they would have to go off script and say, I know you're having, let's say, shortness of breath, but how's your mental health? So to be very clear, the way to expand forward is to, if you look at 911 systems that do this well, i.e. Houston is the biggest example, when you co-locate those clinicians, you develop screening programs, and then you inform the existing protocol. Because what we do not want is to interrupt a center that intakes thousands of calls per day. And I would be remiss if I did not mention that, because you're absolutely correct. I would love for everybody to have a behavioral health screening, but the way this works now is, 988 intakes the call, they can, and they can expand the determinants to whatever they want, because it doesn't go through emergency medical dispatch. If the call comes through 911, they're going to match it to one of those three determinants. The only way to stop that process, which I agree with you needs to happen, is to have somebody like that clinician, and that's what we're working through now. I think that's the next iteration of that, so that a clinician that's listening to these calls can say, I know they came in for alcohol withdrawal, but this may be something I can divert to a mobile crisis team or something else. So we're actively developing that capacity. The three determinants are expanded from the original inception of the program, which was one, and we will continue to report out on those metrics publicly.
Right, because you've got to collect the data first, but, you know, we're seeing more than, obviously, just suicidal ideation. And then the other piece, I was interested in the DC model that you articulated here regarding, you know, clinician, nurse, I think it's slide 23. This is, you know, we, I know from talking with somebody who was at a meeting the other day in Northern District, that 911 still has one person that speaks Spanish. And so, you know, if we're going to be doing this triaging, we have to make sure that there are people who actually speak the language in these areas, because even connecting to language line takes another couple of seconds, or if not more, sometimes 10 minutes. So I think that, you know, we have to add, I mean, you don't have anything about that in any of these slides. You have to add the fact that you've got to add the Spanish language cultural competency in the models as you're thinking about this. Because, you know, there are times where our community is calling just because they need a doctor for basic stuff, because they waited too long, because they don't have a doctor, right? So that's not just in our community, it's all over the place. But, you know, we've just got to diversify how we're, you know, making, doing these things. And so, you know, just making sure that within the models that you're pulling out for us, that you're actually considering language is huge, it's important. You know, right now, you know, again, last year I brought up the fact that there was only one person in 911, and here it is a year later, and there's still one person at 911, one Spanish speaker at 911. So hopefully, that's going to change next budget season or something, but all of these, all of these new models have to consider that.
I will, so the Chief Matts's expertise is oversight, and I know Tania can speak about that, the director of 911. I will say that once it gets triaged, and this is what we do in the hospital, these third-party places have to have either, as you mentioned, language lines or capability. And I think that was addressed in the proposal of both Tele911 and the triage line. But more to what you're talking about, that deals with the point of service. So I would have to defer those questions to 911, because that's an important part. If you don't get the triage correctly, you can't steer it in the correct direction.
Right, and actually, I learned the other day that we actually have a text function, and that the text function into 911 actually works better for language than the actual language line. So first of all, I didn't know we could text into 911, that's pretty cool. But that, the language there seems to work a little bit better. But it's still not a substitute for not hiring people that speak the language. I think that's really critical, thanks.
Thank you. I do, I will defer to any questions for the sake of time. I just want to report that these are also metrics. So again, I would love to focus exclusively on clinical performance. The reality is, we definitely have a challenging system. So I just use this as an example to show you that when you look at high-performing EMS systems, whether that's cardiac arrest, whether that is compliance with stroke metrics, we do have a way of tracking them, and we can use our electronic PCR to make changes, and to surveil the care that's actually being provided in the field. So this is an example of, this is an example of... So this is an example of, this is an example of other high acuity calls. So for example, if somebody goes ahead and inserts a breathing tube down somebody's throat, we track all of those incidents. If somebody has a cardiac arrest and they need 1200KG, so obviously, that is certainly much more my wheelhouse. And I think, once you're fully resourced to do that, I'm happy to report out that these metrics are continually available and it should be on the transparent iteration of the clinical dashboard. So we also track ketamine, which is very important. Ketamine, the use of ketamine certainly has a lot of behavioral health ramifications. We're required to review 100% by the state. So as we delve into the weeds and all of our challenges, I certainly want to assure the city council and city administration and my medical malpractice risk of Maryland that we actually appropriately look at all of these things and we do track outcomes fairly consistently. So those are clinical metrics. I'd be happy to delve into details. The next would be cardiac arrest, which I know the council had expressed some interest in. What this shows you basically is we have the ability by month to look at our 911 metrics compared to national data. And what that slide shows is that we sometimes have a little bit of a challenge, this has already been reviewed, that response times, meaning from the, the time of 911 intake to arrival, is a little bit longer in Baltimore City than it is in other jurisdictions. So we use the national data to benchmark our 911 performance and continually work on how to get units out of the station faster and how to recognize people faster, especially if they're dealing with a life-threatening emergency. The cardiac arrest statistics, and this is kind of interesting. What this shows is we track this by outcomes. And what we're very interested in is what happens when, if somebody, if somebody collapses, and Jamar Hamlin, right, this is the, we've been saying this. So what CNN and the, what we've been trying to talk about for many years happened, I think, for everybody to see. And it's not that you need an emergency department immediately. You need the occurrence of bystander CPR and defibrillation. Baltimore City's rates are on track with other jurisdictions. But what you'll see if you scrutinize that a little bit closely is that this city, not surprisingly, has a continued opportunity, and this is with the last quarter, to improve bystander CPR and the neurological recovery of patients that actually have a witnessed arrest. And this really cannot be accomplished without the increased penetrance of bystander CPR and quite honestly, the availability of defibrillators. And I would, I would respectfully submit that this is an opportunity for us to engage collaboratively with other agencies. With our 27 ambulances and fire apparatus, it is not going to be possible, especially to respond to every cardiac arrest within moments. And so in addition to public access to defibrillators, we are in discussions with the Baltimore City Police Department. Many years ago, they actually had defibrillators in their vehicles. They do not anymore. And this is another, in my opinion, very important facet when we talk about, I mean, we recently just got the police back on the non-breathings, which has been a huge accomplishment thanks to everyone's support. I'm happy to report that we have an excellent working relationship with the police, but at some point, it comes down to numbers. If there are 113 police cars on the road, 27 ambulances, they're much more likely to get to a cardiac arrest sooner than an ambulance is. And so I would make a recommendation based upon this particular data, which we see quarter after quarter, to consider how to operationalize defibrillators. What was that? On the police vehicles. So, and that's all I'd say about cardiac arrest. And I could, we could talk about our population health metrics. This is, so we talked about basically, what is, what is Baltimore City doing now for mobile integrated health? So this is basically a look at our population health division. And in population health, we are situated on the precipice of, I think, of a large expansion. We obviously want to do things that, as Chief Matt's mentioned, improve outcomes and expand the ability to provide care. And this just puts these things in context. We entered into a relationship with University of Maryland to put a nurse practitioner on the road. This showed that if you put a nurse practitioner on the road, this is one nurse practitioner. Over the course of a calendar year, they responded to 195 calls and successfully treated about 150-something of them in place. I would propose that this is only one part of a larger solution. I obviously don't, in my opinion, it, it's not very feasible to put 10 nurse practitioners on the road because you can see that's an overall very small part of our call volume. So what this shows to me is that maybe you can repurpose telehealth and maybe you can provide some minor definitive care now or mobile definitive care now in order to meet the needs of patients. But it is, is it a success from what it does? But this shows there is an opportunity to treat in place, but the impact, again, is comparatively small. This just shows you that the type of calls they responded to were the rather low-acuity ones, most of them with a musculoskeletal complaint. The other challenge that we have, this is basically the global picture. And it's very difficult to make the case sometimes to the Fire Department in terms of how we save costs, but this is a larger discussion. So we also have a program with the University of Maryland Medical Center that shows if you enroll high-risk people who have comorbidities such as asthma, congestive heart failure, if you visit them and enroll them in a program of intensive outpatient ambulatory care, you can reduce readmission. Again, it's difficult because that cost savings does not come right back to the Fire Department. But it shows that if you coordinate care between hospitals, you can prevent readmission rates. Unfortunately, funding for that program, if I'm not mistaken, has gone down. So that operation, those are projected outcomes with the dashed lines. But we will continue, as the Baltimore City Fire Department, to pursue relationships with hospitals so we can continue to identify high-risk populations and reduce the risk for readmission.
I'm just going to dovetail on a couple of things just real quick from the MIH program we had. Remember, it was a four-year grant, started in '18, it just closed out at the end of 2022. They called it Minor Definitive Care Now. It's a terrible name. It's more like Treat and Release, where we put a paramedic and a physician will go out and treat low-acuity calls free of charge. That's what Dr. Lawner was taught. That's very expensive. 10 of Dr. Lawners and me on the street are terribly expensive. It's just another component, another angle. We can go and try to address those. The transitional program also was, was very successful, but, but you're paying for physicians and such on the street. The other thing that we wanted to talk about here real quick was some alternative destinations that we've been doing. Alternative destinations, again, is taking the right patient to the right resource. Currently, we are taking patients to the urgent care center at University of Maryland. We're also using a stabilization center in West Baltimore. We have some other ones that are online we're getting ready to go into. Some of those would be like Total Health Care on Division Street. We're looking at Express Care right outside of Sinai Hospital. They've been at the table, we're in the negotiations with them as well. What are some other ones on SMS, anywhere else, Ben?
It's on the, yeah, it's on the slide.
Go ahead, you got it, Ben.
So this is just a, a challenge that, you know, the hazard of doing something, right? So it was thought, according to the ET3 program, that if we just transported people to alternative destinations and hoped that would work, we could reduce call volume. And just to be very clear on those slides, those are single digits. And the reason for that is, is comparatively fewer people are eligible under protocols. Remember, these clinicians do not practice medicine independently. They have to go to the scene of the emergency, make an assessment, determine that it is not emergency according to very strictly defined protocols, and transport somewhere else. Now, I don't view this slide as a complete lack of success. What this tells me is that our efforts in a mobile, in a, I'm sorry, a medically-informed dispatch space are much more well-invested, meaning that if you figure out and you link the clinician, meaning the advanced-practice clinician, to the paramedic or the EMT, and you make the decision and don't let it go through 911, you can see the comparative difference, right? If you remember the, the DC Right Care Right Now model, we're talking about, I believe, in the first year, 3,000 patients that were diverted. If you look at this particular model, which is a stabilization center and urgent care, and I realize I'm making some general comparisons, the volume is less. And this is another issue that we, I think, this is the last couple of slides. This is something that we, we also found out. So remember the stabilization center, which is a 24/7 walk-in apparatus? And we've talked about how it's underutilized because our transports to the stabilization center maybe happen one or two times a day, if that. Our data suggests that if you look at this, and this is just from the month of, the month of January, well, actually, this is a calendar year, I apologize, there were over 136 incidents to the Turk House. So just to be very clear, when you look at this, is that we transport, let's say, an average of five per month. If you look at the 911 utilization of the Turk House, now to be very clear, it's three different agencies. It's a rehab, it's a, a stabilization center, and another intake area. The ratio of in to out is almost 33 to 1, meaning for every person we take, they call 911 33 times. Now, does this mean it's a failure? No. It just means that this is where coordination of care is very important. So we've created something to, as an alternative destination, and the demand upon 911 services is exceedingly high. So after our calendar year review, and I think in the month of January, we responded there 35 times. So we are working with BHSP to figure out, once we stand these places up to provide 24/7 wraparound services, do they need additional resources there? And ironically, I would just point out that we talked about this several years ago when it was inceptioned, you know, do you need a level of care? What's the problem? Is it another paramedic that you need at the center? And I'm very happy to report that we have a very good working relationship with BHSP, and we'll be talking to them on the 20-something about how to maybe mitigate some 911 responses. But that was a fairly striking slide that they did not have a lot of visibility on, the 30 to 1. And to be fair, there are three different agencies there, but we respond there quite a bit. But that's the reason why it's very difficult to incentivize paramedics to transport if the 911 system is going there a lot. Those are the things we learned from alternative destinations. I think we've hammered the point home about making sure that we match the patient to the correct resource. And Chief Matts, those are some of the planned alternative destinations that we're in dealings with. Express Care, because it's a subsidiary of LifeBridge Health, they have two urgent care units within the city of Baltimore, I believe, so we're hoping to onboard them. These are other small destinations. I think this will continue to basically tick a couple of, you know, calls off the roster. But I think the, the money here, or the most important thing, is to link them, to link them at the time of the call. So I certainly appreciate your time to go through some of the details here. I think our promise to you is we'll report the data transparently and hopefully it'll be very similar to what we report to the city administration. That's an example of what we have implemented and we look forward to making more progress. Chief Matts, I would leave that to you to close off.
And that's it. Next slide is honestly questions?
Sure.
If there's any questions left.
We've already peppered you with plenty, and I've got one more. Going to the, there was a slide you had up there, the MDCN, and that was with regards to nurses riding along in the units.
Nurse practitioners, yes, sir.
Nurse practitioner, nurse practitioners riding along in the units and how we were able to discharge folks on the scene. Once again, reducing our need to take people into, to a hospital and wait at the hospital and so on and so forth, knowing that's a big problem. I thought that was a pretty interesting idea, if only because knowing that certain parts of the city have a higher frequency of low-acuity calls, if there is an opportunity for a nurse to defer some of the, a nurse practitioner to defer some of those calls from our hospitals or even from our urgent care locations, I think it could be really, really helpful. I just, you know, I thought it was a novel idea. You know, going one to 911 and having NP actually respond on the phone call to maybe triage before we have a unit respond. But even more, to have in a unit someone to actually properly triage on site, I think could be really helpful.
I think the challenge, just to add up, to build upon that, the challenge with this is, I agree with you, it's very feasible, but in order to do this under the Maryland medical protocols, it has to go to 911. We have to send the unit, respond, and then you have to send the fire unit and the ambulance. And so I would agree, and the proposal at hand is, if we integrate this a little bit better and somebody needs a minor intervention, ideally, we can skip that step, right? To reduce the burden of the emergency responses that go down the road. But I absolutely agree with you and I, I'm glad that we see the utility in that, right? It's not that you just want to throw that away. It's that how do we integrate it in a smart way so that we're not using resources? Because to me, as a medical director, I see this as, yes, it's a win, but that means we've called 911, we've sent a fire suppression apparatus, we've sent a transport unit. The transport unit has to call the nurse practitioner unit. And so we've prevented them from going to the hospital, but selfishly, it doesn't help us maintain operational continuity. So I, yeah.
So the grant also closed that, where we did this program. I'm happy to report that University of Maryland wants to continue to work with us but on just one unit at a time, which will be based on, on availability. So we're going to do some of that. Again, it's no magic bullet. It's, it can knock out a little bit at a time in a targeted population, exactly, like you said.
Identifying them at dispatch, hopefully.
I appreciate it. And for this, do we have more data, more lessons from these kinds of pilots that could be helpful? Yeah, that's great. Any other questions from the committee?
Both the chairman and my spouse are physicians, and we are both acutely aware of the bed shortage in our hospitals. My wife works at Harbor in South Baltimore, and it is very, very challenging to get someone a bed, to keep them there long enough to get the treatment that they deserve. And there's a lot of pressure, as you both know, on physicians to quickly have folks come in and out. In a similar vein to the line of questioning he was asking, I am curious about other ways of sort of lessening the burden and the pressure on the hospital system, knowing that it's overloaded, knowing that we increasingly just really don't have great places to put folks. I know this is a, one of the priorities of the new administration in Annapolis. I know the governor is very, very, very concerned about this. But just the bed shortage and the, you know, even for a city that has a great number of hospitals and some of the best in the world, we still see pretty outrageous wait times. And, you know, it results in everything that you are struggling with. So just any other thoughts on ways to kind of ameliorate that crisis?
We're actively working on that now, and Dr. Lawner can speak for another two hours on that. But, but to just be fair, it's a combination. I'm just going to start and I'll let Dr. Lawner take it. Personnel shortages, COVID was rough on everybody, so you got personnel shortages. We got this setup, the reimbursement model in Maryland is unique. It's the global-based budget system, which, which basically incentivizes them to board, and I'm sure you're familiar with that. Ben, I will tell you that we're actually working with area hospitals, both the state of Maryland is working with them, we're working with them with the city, the city administration is working with them, and then we have the individual jurisdictions are working to try to come to some semblance of normalcy where we're all kind of working with, with the same sheet of music. And that's kind of, I actually have a meeting tomorrow about that, where we're trying to. Example, one jurisdiction is using their offload policy as 20, 40, 60 minutes. We use 30, 60, 90. That's tough on a hospital on the outside, like a Harbor. Harbor shares three different jurisdictions. So you got two different things coming there. Ben, I'll let you go from there.
My last emergency department shift, I had 36 patients in the waiting room. My whole ED was filled with boarded patients. I saw the same patient that Baltimore City Fire Department transported three times. He had just been discharged from Midtown, came to my emergency department. So what I would say is, of all of the things, I am the least pessimistic about that being solved because the challenge is, is, you know, we need capacity, and capacity is set by the global budget. And so unless we figure out how to build more homes and how to get more inpatient throughput, the emergency departments, much like EMS, are always going to be the tip of the spear without adequate resources. I will say that this issue, this issue has high visibility because I think everybody's, this is why I appreciate the discussion, everybody is now on the same page with the crisis. I mean, it's been a crisis for years. I don't know why it's just a crisis, you know, post-COVID. But I think it's been exacerbated by staffing shortages. So I am happy to report that there's a lot of visibility. I, as an emergency physician in my other life, is, I'm very pessimistic about that because I am, it is extremely helpless, right? And this is not just my emergency department, that's Hopkins, that's Union. There are, there are proven ways that hospitals can help fix this, and hospitals are dealing with internal throughput things in order to make sure there are more beds. But this requires an entire system of care from making sure a patient has a house. And then quite honestly, when you deal with patients, that they're, they need these services, right? They don't have an access to a home, they are addicted to substances, they may have alcoholism, mental health issues, and, and the challenge is, we don't have places to put them. And you've seen the adverse outcomes that happen when we discharge them. So this is an ongoing conversation that involves MDH, HSCRC. I think the global budget is a real challenge, especially for emergency services, because we just don't have enough patients to, we don't have enough beds to move people up.
Yeah. I mean, it was a hot topic on the governor's transition, Health Committee transition team. It impacts everywhere, not just here, obviously. But, you know, when we deinstitutionalized mental hospitals, we didn't really think about where folks would go. And they were on our streets and then in our jails, and now back in our hospitals. And it's a huge, huge, huge challenge that we're all facing.
I appreciate your sensitivity to that issue because everybody's looking for the one big fix, right? I mean, but it all, you all are so right to point out that this is, we operate in an ecosystem. And when one place is not fully incentivized, I think that's why, quite frankly, I mean, people use 911 a lot because we're always there.
All right. Seeing no further questions, I, you know, just want to thank you guys again. Always incredibly thorough, always a great discussion, and I appreciate the amount of work that you guys put into thinking through these problems. I think it helps the committee, it certainly helps me understand what's going on. And I appreciate just the, the opportunity to try things out and see how they, how they could potentially work to help alleviate some of the pressure on our units and our departments. So with that, this hearing is in recess. Thank you all, and I will see you guys next quarter.